Special Town Meeting called for Monday, the fourteenth day of March. We have one article in the warrant. But first, I have to start with some formalities. I have a statement from the town clerk. I have recused myself from this meeting. I am president of Northbrook Village Two, which has an interest in this article. From Eloise Saul. I would hesitate, I would also hasten to say that president of Northbrook Village Two is an unpaid position. At any rate, Mrs. Sauls will be, not be acting as clerk for this meeting, and state law requires that we elect a clerk by ballot. At this point, I shall open nominations for clerk of this meeting. Selectman Val Bradley.
I just, moderator, I nominate James H. Wheeler to be clerk of this meeting.
We have nominated James H. Wheeler to be clerk of this meeting. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, I will, I will move to elect by ballot. You were handed a ballot when you came in, a yes and no ballot. That ballot will be used now to elect the clerk. So please vote yes or no. You will take, tear these two pieces apart, put the one that you wish to vote with in the ballot box. Which looks like this. And will be located up here, in the front of the room. And I'll ask Bob McTague to come forward and handle the ballot box for us. So, vote your yes or no as to Mr. Wheeler as clerk of the meeting, and come pass forward here.
Put in your ballot.
Put in your ballot. And, in the case of the selectmen being absent, the meeting can choose other people to do it. If I hear no objections, I'm going to ask Peggy Sidell to assist the other two selectmen with that count. Can we please have the ballots up here at the selectmen's table now, please? While the selectmen deal with the count, I'll do the beginnings of the meeting. In case of emergency exit, if we have to leave the building in case of alarm or otherwise, I always suggest people use the side exits, which go directly outside and are the quickest way to clear the room. I will ask that as people are called on to speak, that they identify themselves and tell where they live in Berlin, so that we can keep track of that, or what their position is if they're here to represent some party in regard to the matter at hand. Looks like we're going to have to have a few more, a few minutes while we count this.
Declare a majority in favor of the election of James Wheeler as town clerk for this meeting.
Thank you. And I will call on the clerk to read the constable, the call for the meeting and the
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester, S.S. The con, or to the constable of the town of Berlin in the county of Worcester. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Berlin Memorial School on South Street in said Berlin on Monday, the fourteenth day of March, 2011 next, at seven thirty o'clock in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles or in relation thereto. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote, as per vote of the town in said town, fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hear of, fail not, and make do return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforementioned. Given under our hands this nineteenth day of February in the year of our Lord, 2011, Board of Selectmen, Judith Bubin Chairman, Thomas Andrews Vice Chairman, Valerie J. Bradley, Clerk. Special Town Meeting Warrant 31411. A true copy attest. Robert V. Williams, Constable, Worcester, S.S. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up attest copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices, and the post office, fourteen days before the time of holding said meeting as within directed. Robert V. Williams, Constable, 228, 2011.
The article of business we have this evening is to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Fifteen A to authorize the Board of Selectmen to divide, transfer, and change the use, custody, management, and control of approximately seven and sixty-four hundredths acres of land located off Pleasant Street and adjacent to Northbrook Village Two from general municipal purposes to those conservation purposes authorized pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty-eight C. And it continues, you all have received a copy of it, with more specific directions of the particular items involved. At this time, I will call for a motion in the article. Thomas Andrew, the selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to divide, transfer by deed, and change the use, management, and control of approximately seven point six four acres of land located off Pleasant Street from general municipal use to the Berlin Conservation Commission to be used permanently for conservation, passive recreation, open space, and water supply protection pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Eight C, and to take any other such necessary steps, all as described in Article One of the Special Town Meeting Warrant.
The motion is made and seconded to authorize the Board of Selectmen to divide, transfer by deed, and change the use, management, and control of approximately six, seven point sixty-four acres of land located off Pleasant Street from general municipal use to the Berlin Conservation Commission to be used permanently for conservation, passive recreation, open space, and water supply protection pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Eight City, Eight C, and to take the necessary steps, all as described in Article One of the Special Town Meeting Warrant. Mr. Andrew, you want to speak to that?
The, you'll probably hear a lot more about the general project a little bit later on, but I want to emphasize at first, the narrow character of this, the action that we're taking today. We are conveying two strips of land totaling about seven and two-thirds acres that are adjacent to Northbrook Village. And we are committing that to the care of the Conservation Commission, effectively keeping that as open space, subject to the same use restrictions as all of other, other open space. This is meant to address two things. This is meant to address the need to create a sufficient buffer to wellheads, both for the existing Northbrook Village and for the proposed addition to it, which has been approved, I believe separately through a, for Chapter Forty-B process with the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's all we're doing tonight, is taking that seven and two-thirds acres and conveying it to the Conservation Commission, so that it will qualify both as wellhead reserve and as nitrogen credit land. The laws in the Commonwealth require that when you have a particularly intense development, that you reserve land in the vicinity that will not be developed as a way of evening out the nitrogen loading of the land that results from the waste disposal. So that's, that is all we're doing. As far as the land goes, the land that we are conveying is in very large measure wetland. The conservation, the Board of Selectmen have looked at that, have talked to other town boards. We do not see this as vital land for any other municipal use. So, you know, we really viewed this as a win-win proposition, in the sense of addressing some significant issues at Northbrook, without compromising any other potential future use of that land, which was essentially nil. That's it. Thank you.
There others wish to speak to the motion? I want to ask if there's a comment from the Finance Committee? Okay. Do others wish to speak to the issue? Skip Doggins of the Conservation Commission?
Good evening. Whoa. We are very consistent on volume control tonight. First of all, I'd like to give congratulations to the Housing Partnership, who over the last five years has done a superb job trying to make sure that they support the seniors in this town. The senior population has grown much faster than the rest of the population in town. Matter of fact, the last time an open space plan was done, we had four hundred seniors in this town above, I think it was fifty-five, and now it's growing on seven hundred. And there's certainly a need for this type of housing to support the growing senior population in town. The Concom is strongly in favor of this proposal for three reasons. Not because the Conservation Commission has any desire to control this property. As Tom says, it is primarily a wetland that is basically not available for any other town use. But the reasons that we support the proposal is primarily that this provides a single secure wellhead for Northbrook Two, and it also can provide a backup for well issues that have and may arise in the future for Northbrook One. And they do that on a relatively small footprint. Second, the Northbrook Two building has a relatively small footprint. It's a multi-story building. It has a minimization, therefore, of impervious surfaces being added in their area, and it also has a minimal runoff because of the smaller footprint. That's all good relative to the ecology of Berlin and the basic overall support of our water system going forward. We do not and don't want a municipal water support system in town or have to pay for it. So this is one way to hopefully avoid that in the future. The third reason, which many people don't think is necessarily a conservation reason, but we strongly do believe is a conservation reason, is these forty units that would be available as part of Northbrook Two all account toward Berlin's affordable housing quotient relative to compliance with the state affordable housing requirement. And this puts us one step closer to being immune from having to support unwanted Forty-B projects in locations that we cannot control in the town. A Forty-B project, if, as you all know, can come into town and basically bypass all of the local bylaws from planning board zoning and anything that the Conservation Commission has, and build a Forty-B. So if you're living across from a woods or a open space, as private land that someday got sold, could be a Forty-B project. So think about that when you vote this evening. That's the number one reason, I think, that the Conservation Commission believes it's in the best ecological, this is the best ecological value add to the town, because it would be much better to have this project and its controlled water system and septic system than forty sep, separate septic systems and forty separate wells in town.
Are there others? Tom Sanford of the Planning Board?
Planning Board Report.
You need to get closer to the mic.
Board Report. On March eighth, the Planning Board voted unanimously to support the warrant article that we'll vote on tonight. Our decision took in account benefits for the town, as well as the current Northbrook Village residents. Our decision to support this article is quite simple. The current water supply for Northbrook Village has some problems, and one well currently has been taken offline. DEP found that the existing wells to be non-compliant and deficient. An adequate water supply in the long term is at risk. DEP found that the development of Northbrook Two would lead to the creation of a wellfield that would ensure a steady water supply for the current Northbrook Village, and this was our primary consideration and decision, oh, DEP's primary consideration in their decision to grant the approval for Northbrook Two. The state would like the responsibility for this property to be held by the Berlin Conservation Commission. Therefore, in conclusion, we urge you to vote in favor of this article.
My name is Vera Manjum. I live on one fifteen Pleasant Street, and I'm an abutter of this land that my husband and I have walked many, many times. And I don't believe everybody knows exactly where this piece of land is. And why don't we have a map up here showing this, rather than this very small area here? We need a map. And I don't know from that article whether we're voting on this one small piece or the whole piece that is here, the three, the three pieces that are mentioned in here. Is this what we're voting on right now? This is what we're discussing?
Mike Vest, give us a little explanation of the map that's been given out.
It was only the seven point six four acres. So what are we talking about at the moment?
We, we are talking about the parcels labeled...
A, B, and C?
A, B, and C on this map.
Okay. So we're talking about all of these?
And C, all of these together, yeah.
Okay, thank you. But I, I wonder now why we haven't got a larger map, because we can't read the dimensions on this small map, for one thing. And we should have one up here. Another thing that I have been involved with the seniors for eleven years when Northbrook Village first came to Berlin. And, and I've also spoken to a lot of Northbrook Village people that don't want this project. And I have a lot of questions, actually. I hope you don't mind, but I'm concerned that there is only one road at the moment into Northbrook Village. There is no emergency exit at all. Oh, we have something a little bigger. Thank you.
These are the three parcels which...
Those are town land. It belongs to you, okay? That you have to decide tonight whether to make it a conservation land or leave it municipal. As it is, it cannot be built on. It's wetlands, and it cannot be built on. And it abuts the landfill that has been there for many years. So I'm concerned about that particular thing. Would that landfill affect this water? Also, the land that this is going to be built on, Northbrook Village Two, is beautiful woodlands, beautiful oak trees, lady slippers. It's a very lovely piece of land that's going to be destroyed by building there. And I am concerned about the safety of the people on the third floor. If there's a fire, everybody knows what happens in Berlin when there's a fire. You don't just get one fire truck, you get three. You get emergency vehicles, you get the police, and we could get fire trucks from other towns. Where are they all going to fit on that one road into Northbrook Village? When Sawyer Hill was built, Eco Village, they made them blast through rock to put in an emergency exit. And I'm very concerned for the seniors. I've dealt with them, and I know that they don't move that fast if they're on medication. They have to get to the end of the hallways. It could be smoky. They have to go downstairs. I think you're not thinking of the safety of the people that are going to be moving into this building. And I talked with the Shoba Board of Health. They said there was one well that had nitrates, and it's on Pleasant Street well, which is where we live, on Pleasant Street. He said all of those houses could have a nitrate. What happened to River Bridge? Weren't we offered land at River Bridge? Can anybody answer that for me? And I would like to hear from the fire department why they thought that this was perfectly all right without an emergency road. Could I have an answer from them? I urge you to vote no on this project, because you're voting for Berlin land. You're not really voting for Northbrook Village, but it is your tax money, it's federal money, and it's state money, which is seven million dollars, a lot of money, for forty residential well apartment buildings with kitchens in each apartment and one elevator. That's it. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you for hearing me.
Is there any, is there any comment from somebody in the fire department in regard to the question on the entrances? Wes Durant?
Wes Durant.
This is not the fire department, but...
I was on the original Berlin Retirement Homes Committee. And when the property was purchased, we hired Charlie Perkins of Perkins Engineering to lay out the entire project. From the very beginning of the project, the desire was to build initially forty units, and sometime in the future, an additional forty units. That land, as far as its percolation is concerned, is a carryover from the South Commons property. It was originally, many, many years ago, an old underground river. And so, when it was percolated, it was found to be absolutely perfect for what we were using it for. The water supply was sufficient and things of this nature. But I suppose over thirty years, things do change. The original plan that Charlie Perkins laid out for the project was that, knowing that the town owned South Common, that if in the future, the town so elected to do so, they could connect the road that goes through Berlin Retirement Homes to South Commons, so that there would be a through road. It was decided initially not to do this, because we felt it would become a speedway for the youth of the town. And therefore, to protect the senior citizens, that addition would not be put through there. But if you look at the original layout of the plan for Northbrook Village, it does show that that road could at some point extend through to South Common, so that if emergency vehicles had to get through, they could come down through that way. That was the initial thought of the whole situation. We hired Ray Renzoni to design the project, because back in the late seventies and early eighties, we wanted a project that would be in keeping with the town. We, as a committee, dealt with HUD, only as far as the financing of the people in the apartments. The project was funded by the Farmers Home Administration. And Farmers Home Administration was very difficult to deal with, because they weren't used to dealing with us farmers, even though they said they were. The whole project was, in my estimation, very, very successful. And I think the people who reside there have found it very, very successful. And I think that those that were back in that era had the foresight to realize that at some point in time, it would have to be expanded. And that's what we are dealing with today, with being the expansion. I thought back then that we would build some of the same types of buildings that are currently there, but HUD says no, that you have to build one of these high-rise structures, which I agree with Mrs. Manjum, it would be look far better if the same quality and the type of buildings that currently exist were built there. And that was, and there is sufficient room to build that type of building on that piece of property. It's HUD that's saying, no, you can't do that. You have to do what we're telling you to do, because we're giving you your money back to build your project. Thank you.
Another comment was made about three stories and one elevator and so forth. Could someone indicate why some of those plans have been made in that fashion? You need to come forward to a microphone to speak, please.
Hello, my name is Greg Zorzy. I'm the project architect. I'm with Studio One Inc.
A little bit closer to the mic.
We met with HUD early on and had a preliminary design meetings with HUD with regard to the layout of the building. Three-story height is what HUD was wanting us to do in terms of construction feasibility and cost. The one elevator is all that's required, is not any kind of a code issue at all. In fact, the elevator is oversized to accommodate a wheelchair or a gurney. So I think those, that answers those two questions. Yes, the building is fully sprinkled, fully fire alarmed. We've gone over the contract documents with the fire officials and building officials. There's no code issues whatsoever with the, with the building. Thank you.
Okay. Others? I had a gentleman that wanted to speak. I have not gotten a reply from the fire department. I did ask for that, I haven't seen anybody as... Oh. Police chief, Otto Road.
I won't speak for the fire department, but as far as elevators go, in any emergencies, the elevators are shut off and they're not used. So even if you had ten elevators, you still have to go down the stairs. So hopefully that answers that. As far as the one entrance, it was, we looked at that, both us, the fire department and the rescue department, and it was determined that the entrance was wide enough and the area is flat enough, that if there was an emergency in there, that it wouldn't be a bottleneck or a stopping point, that there was enough to fit all the emergency vehicles anywhere around there to service that building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm a little blank. I believe... I believe when the head player had the first visit from the, on whatever board it was, we all, I think, I think we voted on the commercial building. But I find out now it's changed. The road was not, not way, two ways. Two ways a building. Come in, come into Notchville, come out the other way. Or come in, the building was a, uh, two-way street. Now, I'm not exaggerating. I had a police just talking about now. I lived in Notchville. I let them what they're talking about. First of all, that said, we were gonna give you two-way traffic. Okay. We went along with that one. From the, you keep coming in normally. Ended, brought up, uh, come to the, with the clubhouseers. We were told by no means that it's gonna be a two-way. Everyone was allowed that. Now come to find out, I just found out this could be a one-way. Well, who was the car that was up here? Who was the, who was the officer that came up here?
Please address your comments to the moderator who will call and someone to answer it, sir. If you have a question, ask it to me and I will try to get the answer for you.
You tell me, is the... What?
Well, ask your question. If you have a question, we'll, we'd like to try to help you with it.
You tell me that the, now it's titled, supposed to be, uh, the one-way, one-way in to the park, right? By the way, I live in Notchville Village. You're telling me that, that you're gonna have trouble. And I know you're gonna have trouble because you go, you go walk my, my, my street. I can tell you how many cars going in. I was just, uh, nah. Ambulance, one, two, three, at least three cars besides the, 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 uh, fire hydrant, fire urgent. I'll tell you, if you, come down and live in Notchville and see where this thing is going before you vote it all. Now, if this, 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 this couple of, uh, people up here, pardon me, I've had a stroke, but I'm scared to say what I feel like saying. If you think you got troubles now, now, if these guys come down, try to get down the street, they get pleasures, they get a supper.
Okay. Mr. LeBlanc? I, I get the clear point that you're making, that you feel there will be traffic problems with this arrangement.
Yes.
And I think rather than I trying to debate those problems here right now, I think you've made your point for everybody understands that point from you. And perhaps we can go on to discuss something else if that's okay.
They discovered that they're gonna make a two-way plant, oh, back to the some street? Uh, there's, there's another street going...
Well, as of right now, there is no plan to make such a street.
Uh...
To another street, to go through to South Street or some other street. There is definitely no plan that I have seen that does that at this time.
Again, Senator.
Are there others that wish to speak? Sir? Mm-hmm?
My name is Mark Coolidge and I live at 135 Pleasant Street in Northbrook Village. I've lived there for the last five years. Nice place to live, nice community. This project is gonna disrupt the nicest senior development project in the Commonwealth. I've been to 90% of them around the Commonwealth. This is the nicest setting that anybody could ever want to be in, nicest town. But this project that Monticuce Healthcare is trying to do is gonna ruin the whole Northbrook Village property. I live in the first, when you come in, when you come into Northbrook Village, I live in the first building on the right. Emergency vehicles come in, they park, they do what they have to do. They did a wonderful job, not complaining about DMTs, the police or anything. I had a neighbor that just moved in here on Saturday, moving trucks in front of her building next door to me. Couldn't get a car to go around the moving truck. What if there was an emergency? Now, this is at nine o'clock in the morning. This isn't at one or two when the fire alarm would go off, oh, there's some sort of an emergency. There's never any cars in the way at that, that time of day. But during the day, this, uh, this project isn't even, the main road going into Northbrook Village, and I'm telling everybody, drive in, go down in front of the community room, and I'll guarantee in six months, you're gonna have a, um, big, huge hole there, a sinkhole. It's already happening before we even have trucks driving in and out of there. It's just gonna ruin the whole thing. You get beautiful condo-type buildings there, wonderful place, like I said, and you're gonna put up this Taj Mahal in the backyard that has taken away, like Mrs. Munjam said, it's taken away from the environment, the, the nature, everything out back. How, the purpose of the wells, do we have to put up a 40-unit project to fix the well problem at Northbrook Village? I just think it's crazy. That's my opinion. And the people that are putting on this project, in my opinion, no good. I don't want to get into why, a lot of you people in this town...
We aren't, we don't comment on the people, but rather the issue of the project.
Yes. Um, are they the only ones that are, are doing a project like this? Is there anybody else that wants to do a project? That's what I'm asking.
I don't know that there's any other project. Timothy Wheeler, if you might comment on what might be happening in regard to projects
Actually, I, I had something else I wanted to say, but let me see if I can address that issue.
Deal with it all while you're up.
All right, we'll wrap a number of issues together. Berlin needs to have 10% of its housing units affordable. With the new census, we'll jump up to 1,300 units. So we'd have to have 130 affordable units. And currently, we have 65. This project gives us 40, which gets us up to about 105. That leaves us susceptible to 40Bs. As you recall, in December of '09, we voted the River Bridge project, the goal of which was to create a number of apartment units that would bump our number with the 85 affordable units we'd get there, up over 10%. And that's where we want to be because we really want to avoid the 40B threat in the future. So there, there is the River Bridge project as it comes online that'll help us in the future with our growth as a result of the new census. This project, Northbrook, gets us up over the 10% figure as of today, but when the new census figures come in, we need River Bridge as well. So we really need both of these projects combined. River Bridge, excuse me, Northbrook Two. Northbrook Village is run by, by Berlin Retirement Homes. It's a private entity. It has a group of cooperators. They elect a board. That board entered into an agreement with Monticuce Home Health Care. Hope I'm right. Someone in the back could go, yeah, you're on the right target. They ended into an agreement together to put a proposal for Northbrook Two to HUD. So there's a board that exists that runs Berlin Retirement Homes, Northbrook Village, private entity, nothing to do with the town. There's a new board, three members appointed by Berlin Retirement Homes, three appointed by Monticuce, one at-large member from the town of Berlin. So that seven-member board is the group that will oversee Northbrook Two. Those two groups are private entities. What happens internally on that site isn't something that the town meeting dictates. What we're being asked to do is to transfer a parcel of land so that water supply and nitrogen fixing can be dealt with, which will benefit both sites. And I think that's the point the planning board made, and I think the Conservation Commission made as well. Currently, although I understand today, all the wells are back online at Northbrook Village, but we're still seen by DEP as non-compliant and deficient. And those issues from the folks I've talked to at Ross Associates and other places, those issues aren't gonna go away. So in order to make sure that both these projects are viable, Northbrook and Northbrook Two, this land has to be transferred so the wells that are in can meet state code and be put online. Without them, I think the planning board felt we might find ourselves in jeopardy in Northbrook One. And that doesn't help any of us. So the issue tonight is transferring land for the well and the nitrogen fixing for the septic systems. And the other issues, most of those were theoretically dealt with during the site plan approval process that went with the Board of Appeals when the joint proposal from Berlin Retirement Homes and Monticuce went before the Board of Appeals. So I think, I hope that helps a little.
So in other words, there are, there's no other similar project to this that's currently in consideration, is that correct? Are there others that wish to speak?
Peter Hoffman, Randle Road. I just want a clarification on the well issue. If this article fails to pass, or this resolution fails to pass, does that mean that the wells cannot be dug, or an easement couldn't be provided, or a way in which the water could be provided and the septic system could be shared could not be done? Or in both cases, it would be permitted? I'm not opposed or for it, but I just think that's an important clarification for someone to provide to the group. Thank you.
Is someone from the Board of Health that could comment on that, or somebody from, Please introduce yourself.
Sure. I'm Gary Shepherd. I work for David E. Ross Associates, and we're the civil engineers on this particular project. In a way, this whole town meeting is kind of silly. And the reason is, is we need to have this buffer zone land, and the DEP says the fact that the town of Berlin owns this land and is never gonna do with it, do anything with it, isn't good enough. It has to actually be under the control of the Conservation Commission rather than the Selectmen, because theoretically, the Selectmen could at some later date decide to build a school there or something like that. Now, you know and I know, if you go out there, there isn't gonna be anything built there because there's a lot of wetlands and it's a fairly small area. So about the only thing that it's good for is open space, which is used for today. After this project is done, if you walk there, you'll still be able to walk there, you'll still be able to take your dog there, it will still be town-owned land, it'll be owned by the town of Berlin, and it'll be perpetual open space. The thing is, is that the DEP says, we won't issue your permits unless it's under the control of the Conservation Commission. So that's why we're here, is to transfer to the Conservation Commission so they can permanently preserve it. If it doesn't get this protection, unfortunately, we're not sure what the DEP was gonna do. They say that it has to be under the control of the Conservation Commission. So I, I think that could potentially put the existing project's water supply in jeopardy should the wells fail again, all right? The, the only reason the DEP hasn't been enforcing, well, let me, let me back up. There have been some problems with the water quality for the existing project. It's also non-compliant under the current regulations. The DEP wouldn't allow those wells to be permitted if they were being applied for today by today's standards. They haven't done anything up to this point because they didn't really have any enforcement mechanism, and the problem wasn't enough that it was risking any health. So they didn't do anything to close down the existing water supply. Well, now that the DEP is involved with this, it's kind of like having the toothpaste out of the tube. They're gonna want to make sure that that existing facility gets their new water supply. And so in order for them to get their new water supply, the existing facility has to have this land as well. So again, all we're doing is transferring land from the Selectmen to the Conservation Commission. It's still open space, you can still use it, it's still town land, it's just that the state isn't gonna issue their permits unless it's controlled by the Conservation Commission.
Paul Kelleher, Barnes Hill. I don't want to hold things up. My, from what I've heard tonight, it sounds to me like the overriding issues for doing this are strong, but I think that the proponents should definitely work with the people from Northbrook and, and work out the problems that the, that the people who live in the area are expressing. I don't think we should avoid that. The question I have, I'm sure has already been answered, and, and so I don't want to hold things up, but we've been saying that the land we're talking about is all wetlands, yet we're gonna put a building on it. Am I to assume that we're putting a building on land near this?
No.
Nearby land, is that right? I just need an answer for that. Thank you.
Are there others that wish to speak?
Jerry Freed, 12 Brook Lane. I came thinking this would be a brief meeting with a simple issue. Apparently, it's turned into a referendum as to whether Northbrook Two should be built or not. or not. I think, according to what Tim Wheeler and others have said, this is an issue which isn't up to us to resolve. The question on the floor deals with transferring land to preserve an existing water supply and hopefully to avoid further deterioration to it. To me, that is the issue. I think the question should be moved.
Marcia Johnson. You want to come up and make a motion to that effect?
Marcia Johnston, Baker Road, previously from Pleasant Street. I'd like to request that this question be a paper ballot.
Is there a second? I'll take that as a motion, is there a second? Motion made, and seconded, we have a paper ballot on this issue? That means we would use a yes or no ballot, much like what we used earlier this evening, and each person would vote in secret? I will ask you to vote for this by voice vote. All those in favor of taking this by a secret paper ballot, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. So we'll continue with debate. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in regard to the original main motion? If not? I'm gonna suggest that you not do so, since it appears that I was about to call for the The, since no one was going to speak, I was going to proceed with the vote. The motion is, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to divide, transfer by deed, and change the use, management, and control of approximately seven and sixty-four hundred acres of land located off Pleasant Street from general municipal use to the Berlin Conservation Commission, to be used permanently for conservation, passive recreation, open space, and water supply protection pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48(c), and to take all of any other steps as described in Article I of the special town meeting warrant. I'm gonna take this initially by voice vote. I will, you will note that this is to be a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes are certainly in majority, but I have to make sure that we have a two-thirds majority. Therefore, I will be calling, I will call for a hand count. Let's see, I need some people to help me with hand count. Let's see. Give me a minute to get a couple of things. I'm gonna ask Ron Vavruska, Carl Wickstrom, Dennis Fierabey, and Peter Wheeler to come We have one hundred and sixty-three yes, thirteen no. The motion passes by the required two-thirds majority. That, um, that completes the business of this meeting. Is there a motion to dissolve? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please help us pick up the chairs.